Welcome to Thinking Green. I'm Rana and this is kind of unusual. We generally don't do a show over the summer, but every so often, a topic comes up that really shouldn't wait till we're back on the air in October, and so we plug in a special one. So tonight, my guests are Rob Funk, who is the Finance Director for the New London Public Schools, and Myrna Martinez, who's a member of the Board of Education. And they're going to talk about school financing, but in general, but in particular, about the idea of non-lapsing funds. So, welcome both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess before we even go into a history, maybe one of you can just define what a non-lapsing fund is.
Go for it.
Okay. A Board of Education is essentially a department of town or city government, so as a result, we don't have a fund balance. So, a city, you know, has, they refer to it as the kind of rainy day fund. It's the flex and the dollars. It's how they take care of emergency expenditures and things like that. But because a Board of Education is considered, from a financial perspective, to be a department of the city, we don't have our own fund balance. So if we have an emergency and it causes us to go over budget, then essentially, we've broken the law by over-expending. So, the idea of a non-lapsing fund is to, if we have a surplus in a particular year, that we're able to reserve that surplus to use for specific expenditures. Typically, it would be building maintenance, you know, or other, some other kind of major capital expenditure, that we can then use that fund to take care of any unforeseen or unplanned expenditures like that.
And I'm going to, this is perfect. They're a good combination, because that sounded pretty technical to me, and I'm going to give a layman's, more of a little layman's piece there, because I was thinking, if I was listening to that explanation and didn't have experience with it. So basically, yes, because we don't carry a fund balance, what it means is that, I mean, one simple little piece is that at the end of the year, whatever our budget, like right for right now, our proposed budget, or our budget that was sent to council was $72.4 million, if we were to, that budget isn't going to remain, but if that's the budget that we had, we, anything that we have left over needs to get returned to the city. We have no ability to save it, save any remaining portion for future use. My simpler way.
Yes.
So, now, this isn't the first time the idea of a non-lapsing fund has come up. So, what's the history? We seem to not have that ability right now on the Board of Ed side, but what's the background on this sort of thing?
So, I'm going to start with this by jumping in and saying that I personally find this to be a, I've been serving on the board for almost six years, and it's been an issue that we've been dealing with since the beginning of when I was serving. In other words, when Funk and I first, Rob Funk and I first served together. And it's, I just feel up to here with this issue that we have not resolved it, and it seems like a basic prudent way to ensure the best use of our resources. And so I guess I give that as a part of the history to say that it's been a long time, way too long, and so to start with, when I, when we were first serving together, which was in 2000, I guess December of 2013, we, this resolution that I have here on the top, the resolution for the non-lapsing fund had already been in process with, at the time, we had state intervention. So Adamowski had begun this, recommended this and begun the process, because at the end of this, it even says, "Be it further resolved that the city shall deposit into said account 398,174 of the unexpected, unexpended funds from the 2012-2013 budgeted appropriation for education." So this is the first that I knew of it in our district.
Wait, are you telling me, in short, that one of the problems that led to our having state intervention was a lack of this kind of fund? Or maybe...
No, 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 that's not what I was saying. I was just saying that it had already been, something that had been identified as having been helpful for the smooth running, functioning of our district and best use of our resources. And so I'm just saying, it goes back to at least then. I don't know if anything was happening prior to this, so do you want to...
To my knowledge, yeah, it started back when Dr. Adamowski took over state intervention of the district. I think that it was relatively new legislation at the time. As he explained it, the legislation had essentially been passed to make school districts able to be more efficient in their spending, because it's, you might imagine, quite challenging to try and spend a $40 million general fund with probably 200 different people making purchases, to spend it at exactly the $40 million that was budgeted, because things come up. And another thing that's important to understand is that the end of the fiscal year is the last that you can use the funds from that. If you order something to come in, you know, in June, and it doesn't arrive until July, it's now an expenditure for next year, but the money that you were going to use to pay for it has to be returned back to the city, because it's unexpended funds, because of the way the fiscal year works. But yes, I mean, I think that the district started really looking into it back in 2012. At the time, the district and their attorneys drew up a proposed ordinance, which the city council, I'm actually not sure if the council rejected it, rather, the city finance director wrote, at the time, Jeff Smith, wrote a different version of the ordinance, which essentially took the control of how the funds would be expended out of the board's hands and really put it in the hands of the city council. I think it even stipulated that the council would be able to spend a portion of the funds for projects that they chose as well. And so, the board at that time rejected it. They said, "This is not in the spirit of a non-lapsing fund," and then the topic has come up a number of times since, and the board's never been able to get something through to the council that they're comfortable with.
So I want to piggyback on a couple of things there. One, you mentioned the fiscal year, and so the important thing there to remember is because, not for you to remember, just, you know, to remember is that because, because the end of the fiscal year, like you said, is the end of June, but we have students until about the end of June in our buildings. There are times, I mean, there's multiple reasons why that schedule, that timeline is difficult for us, but one of them being that because we have students in the building until the end of June, when there are certain projects that need to be done that are, that let's say, will have cranes over buildings, or there's a removal of toxic substance, or there's, there's just, you know, workers and trucks and movement going on, it's not always the best idea to have when there's students and vehicles and family members coming through the building. So that's one of the difficulties. And then if we were to therefore go into the beginning of the fiscal year, which is when the summer is for us, the difficulty there is to expend, to spend on projects of the size for, you know, building, maintenance, construction, that spending those amounts in the beginning of the year, when we haven't even had students in the buildings and we don't know what may happen with, I don't know, or boilers, let's say, you know, there's so many things.
Something that has happened.
Right, 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 right. I mean, a lot of these that are going to sound like maybe hypotheticals today, they're not really hypotheticals. They're real-life situations that we've experienced. So that's one of the things about the fiscal year. Another piece, you mentioned the legislation, and I think it's important to note that, correct me if I'm wrong, that when it was first introduced and passed, that it was 1% of the budget?
A maximum of 1% of your general funds, if they're left over at the end of the year, you can deposit.
You could deposit into a non-lapsing fund. Well, the interesting piece, that now that it's been put into practice in other districts, not in New London, and it's been seen as successful, that legislation just passed its last session to allow a maximum of 2% of the budget to be put into such a fund. So it has been seen as successful, and I can't see how you would responsibly take care of issues that come up without having the ability to put money aside. I mean, I constantly have to, you know, I'm not a finance person like yourself, but I constantly have to look and compare of how we do things in our own home budgets, you know? And, you know, I think many of us who are homeowners have, have an account, have an ability to put something aside in case our, or try to accumulate in case of emergencies, urgent issues that have to do with the repair of our homes. So I think it's a similar, similar situation.
Well, it's, I understand why the fiscal year for municipalities and for their departments are, you know, July through June budget, but it seems kind of ironic that it would not work well with a school year schedule, because any big capital improvements, you're going to want to do when the children aren't in school. And so, even if you can plan ahead of time, any project is going to straddle two budget years, and, you know, is this a way to get around that?
Good point. Good point.
And it is, yeah. It is a way to get around that. It's a way to be able to plan ahead more and to be able to, you know, most of the substantial projects on a school building aren't going to happen in two weeks, and basically, there's only two weeks in June that there's nobody in there. But the other thing is, is the whole planning piece, you know? When we enter cooling season, in the sealed buildings that we have, all the newer buildings, if the air conditioning is not working and it gets too hot in there, essentially, we could have to close school. So we need to reserve funds for when it's time to turn on the cooling systems, something's going to break. But we don't know what's going to break. We don't know how much it's going to cost. So, the non-lapsing fund really gives us the ability to plan farther ahead, to not have to save that money for the heat or the cooling season, because we saved it from last year, you know? It just gives us a buffer to work along.
And we actually already see that the city budget does that. There is the rainy day fund, that if something comes up, we can deal with it. And just to get an idea of, you know, the amount of money we're talking about, if we're talking about a $60 million budget, then 2%, that would be a maximum of $1,200,000, that could be put in that fund?
Well, it's actually specific to the general fund. So we have a $43 million general fund. So we're talking $860,000 maximum.
Okay, so it isn't even that big a line item.
Yeah, and it was actually $430,000 when it last was, you know, presented to the council, because the 2%, it only went up to 2% just, you know, weeks ago when they passed the legislation.
So that the $430,000 is the equivalent to the 1%.
And, you know, there's a chance that there'll only be $10,000 or, you know, 50,000.
There may be nothing.
Yeah, that's the ceiling. That's the max.
Right, but, and that's the point, to be able to put the $10,000 away and be able to accumulate and save up. That, you know, I don't, I don't know what was happening, and that was prior to us. I don't know exactly what was happening in that year for them to have $398,000, but, you know, whatever those circumstances were. And, you know, it actually reminds me of specific circumstances that have happened with us, where, let's say, we couldn't get the roof, again, going back to the roof, and I don't remember what the cost was.
$140,000.
$140,000.
This was Harbor.
This was Harbor, yeah, so we couldn't get that done in time. It really would have been helpful to be able to put it in a non-lapsing fund and just move the, you know, have the project done one month later, and during the summer, having the money having been already saved. Another important piece here is that you mentioned that the resolution was reworded at the time by Jeff Smith in order for the council to have control of the funds, of whether the funds go into the non-lapsing fund, or whether the funds were actually going to be expended for whatever it is that the board had deemed necessary as far as maintenance. And I don't know, did we say that the fund is exclusive for, it's not to be spent on anything, but it's just for maintenance, which is an important piece, but...
Which isn't necessarily something legislation requires, but it's what New London's needs are.
Yeah, I think most non-lapsing funds that you'll find throughout the state do keep it to capital improvements. I don't think the legislation is quite that tight on it, but yeah, I mean...
Well, that makes sense.
Essentially, we're saying, this is what we would want to spend it on.
Yeah, we've determined that that's how we would like to use it. But the important thing also about the, the control being on the city's side, when this was originally suggested as part of the resolution, we did, Public Works took care of a portion of our, our, our maintenance, and was it two years ago that the entire, was it two years ago?
Two years ago.
That the entire Public Works budget that's dedicated for the public schools, which was $515,000, was cut to zero. And so essentially, we have full responsibility for the maintenance of our buildings, and so therefore, to me, it seems like therefore, we should also be able to say, you know, because we're handling it financially and managerially, that we should be able to determine what it is that needs to get spent on, as long as it's within the maintenance.
It seems like it's kind of an incentive also for the Board of Ed to, like, be proactive on this kind of thing, if, you know, the board is paying for all of its own day-to-day maintenance.
You know, when we, when we replaced the Harbor roof last year, we planned several months in advance for that and for, for when, would that be the right term? Other expenditures that we deemed not as urgent as replacing the roof, but we still didn't pull the trigger on replacing the roof until late June, because there were other unforeseen emergency things that could come up. We were fortunate that, that those emergency repairs didn't come up last year, but, I mean, that's the reason why we started doing the roof as late as we did. I mean, that, and of course, obviously, we couldn't start the work until students were out of school, but even just getting everything in place, you know, to be able to start. So we had to wait and see what other expenditures we might have.
And in terms of capital expenditures, don't, aren't some projects prerequisites to doing other things that need to be done? Like the roof at Harbor School had to be done before windows could be worked on. And so if you get, you know, clog up the sequence at the beginning, it actually makes a lot of projects happenly, and happen maybe when there are students in the school, which is very far from optimal, when you're talking about a big capital project. Can you maybe give, well, I know this has come before city council a few different times, different wordings, and it seems as though the Board of Ed and city council have not, at least for the last decade, managed to come together on it. What are the arguments that you hear against having this fund?
The primary one that I hear is that if there are any additional funds that the board has deemed that, that we don't need to spend, that the money belongs to the city, and so therefore, it should just go right back to the city.
In some of the discussion that the council had over the last non-lapsing fund ordinance that was proposed, the city has been very interested in preserving and building their fund balance, and I, you know, kudos to them for that, because they're absolutely right. Their fund balance needs to be preserved. We have substantial bonding that we're doing over the next several years, and our interest rates are dependent on that. The council actually passed an ordinance saying that they had to increase their fund balance a certain amount each year, and they've, they've been meeting that ordinance, and they've actually built fund balance by eight million, nine million, 10 million, something like that, over the last several years. But in the discussion, they were saying, "These are funds that are being turned back, because they were unexpended, they're being turned back to the city, and so they automatically go into fund balance." And the council, some of the council members said, "As a city council, we're not being responsible by taking that back out of the fund balance that is so important for us to preserve." But the Board of Education didn't overspend their, their budget. You know, the Board of Education really didn't contribute to there not being a fund balance in that sense, so...
And other departments are able to reap the benefits of having a fund balance if they do overspend?
In any instance, if any department is going to spend more than their budget, they have to request an additional appropriation, and that appropriation would have to be granted by the council. And the board has a right to request an additional appropriation as well. It just, in my history, I haven't seen an appropriation requested or approved by the board, and it's always been pretty clear that we're not to overspend our budget. And we try very, well, we work very hard to not overspend the budget, and we haven't overspent it.
It seems to me that there are a lot of, I find, perceptions about which departments run efficiently and which don't necessarily run efficiently. And, and it would be nice, you know, maybe come back in October, November, it would be nice to look at some of the numbers to dispel some of the myths. I would, I also look, I deal a lot with people from the Public Works Department, and they get cut like crazy. And, you know, once again, it, a lot of what they are doing is like maintenance stuff and dealing with maintenance emergencies, things that can really escalate quickly if they're not dealt with. And although police and fire are important parts of the city, in some ways, they don't, I don't know, it seems as though the city isn't taking care of some of the things that are really important on a day-to-day basis. So, just my own perception that people feel as though they're getting more value from the fire department than perhaps we really are, and feel we're getting less value from the education budget that we, than we really are.
Yeah, no, I completely agree, and I, and I think a large part of our community from discussions that do really value the education system and, and the maintenance of our city as well. And you're right, for some reason, those, those departments aren't as fiscally cared for.
No, and in the years I've been dealing with Public Works, you know, Department, like Dave DeNoya started out being in charge of parks, and then Parks and Highway, and then all five of the branches of Public Works. So, you know, you can see that things have been cut, because, you know, the upper levels, and there was an engineer for a while, and now there's a part-timer. So, it seems like some essential roles have been cut.
Yeah, it sounds similar, like with the Public Works portion of our, of having the education budget, and then that piece is cut, and then the...
Yeah.
Ed needs to absorb that responsibility.
Now, maybe since you're on, I have you both on the show, could you give a little bit of an overview of the Board of Education budget, you know, what, without specific numbers, but what generally the money goes towards and what most of the money goes towards?
The vast majority of the money goes to paying salaries and benefits, because we are a very labor-intensive business, you know, teachers and paraprofessionals and...
The vast majority, meaning about 70?
It's pretty close to 70% for the salaries and the benefits combined. Health insurance actually is about $8 million a year that we spend.
Massive.
Just to pay for health insurance. It's, and that actually has gone up 11 and 1/2% for two years in a row. Both times, both years, we projected it would be about 6%, and then it went up 11 and 1/2%.
I just want to emphasize that. So going up for two years in a row at 11 and 1/2%, think about the, where that needs to get cut into for the rest of the budget.
Yeah. And then we spend a smaller percentage of the budget on maintaining the buildings in the sense that, well, we spend a little bit, little bit less than a million dollars a year on an average year for the maintenance of buildings. That doesn't include, like, custodial, but, but actually repairing and maintaining mechanical systems. Utilities are fairly substantial, and then, you know, of course, we have the custodial costs, and we have secretarial costs, and we have contracted services and information technology and all of that, but definitely, the vast majority of the cost of the school budget is for people to work with our students.
Well, you know, when I, you know, served my single term on the Board of Ed a decade ago, the first time I looked at the budget, the thing that shocked me most was how little of it was really discretionary, because the 70% that you talk about, that's personnel and insurance, that's part of contracts. You, you don't have any flexibility. If you have maintained, you know, certain staff-student ratios, and the contract requires that we pay this amount per teacher, there really isn't any taking away from it.
I mean, we do have staff-to-student ratios spelled out in the contract, the labor contract. We try to stay as close to those as we can. We can't go over them. But if we want to offer some specialty courses, if we want to offer something more than just the most basic education, which, you know, with so many different students from different backgrounds, we really want to capture their interest.
And what we have committed to do in order to receive magnet funding and therefore provide an education that's more engaging and appealing to our students as well as those of out of district.
Very good point, and there is some robust programming that comes along with the magnet program, but there also is a lot of basic educational costs that comes with the magnet program. We receive $12 million a year in revenues for the magnet program. I mean, that's a pretty substantial piece of a $70 million budget. So we're, they're taking care of their costs, shall we say. The magnet revenues that are coming in are certainly offsetting any expenses and more, but we've had such small increases in our regular budget that it's pretty difficult to really even cover inflation. I mean, this year, our general fund budget went up 500, I think it was $585,000. It was 1.05%, and inflation is running a whole lot more than that. And when you consider that the health insurance cost is one of those numbers, and that was an 11 and 1/2% increase, there's just no way that we're keeping up with the, you know, inflationary costs.
And, well, there are two thoughts that I have. One is that the class sizes are relatively large in New London compared to surrounding communities, and I, I don't even know that there's a way out of that at this point, because when the new buildings were built, those ratios were planned in, like, the number of classes, class sizes. But also, unlike most of Connecticut's school districts, we have a growing student population. So...
A growing resident student population.
Yes.
We also have a growing magnet student population, but our resident students, if there were no magnet program, still, our resident student population is increasing.
Yeah.
So what are the approximate numbers of students we're educating now, resident students, compared to like six years ago? Is it...
I think we have around 750 magnet students, and six years ago, I think we had around 250 or 300. I'm sorry, I haven't looked at the numbers in a while, but the resident population, I don't want to throw out numbers that are wrong, but it's, you know, it's increased substantially. Probably increased 5% to 10% in the last six years.
Which is a pretty significant amount compared to so many of the local school systems that are seeing a drop.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Statewide, Connecticut is seeing a decrease in total number of students.
So when we talk about, you know, 2% general increase, you know, in the budget, is that taking into account that we're serving more students?
No, those additional students really are not being funded, so we're, we're getting cut in two ways. I mean, one is inflation, just keeps going, and the other is the increased enrollment. You know, you take on one more student in a district, that doesn't necessarily add any incremental cost, but you take on 50, it definitely does.
And of course, when they're resident students, like special education... And of course, when they're resident students, like special education costs can be a very volatile line item that's hard to plan for.
Yeah, I want to say that for me, something important about bringing this up right now is that, and I'm not running again, so it's important to say this, but I can't help but, you know, it's campaign season locally and I personally, and you know, Rob Funk is not, is here as an employee of the New London Public Schools, but for myself, you know, as someone who is elected but not running again, I can't help but think of all of those people who are running again and are running for the first time, who are running for the Board of Education or the City Council or for mayor. And to kind of shine a light on this important issue that is about the responsibility and of taking care of our resources. And I guess I just, you know, I want to put it out there to everyone who is running to say like, look into this issue and is it important enough to you when you think of a system that runs, system, whether it is our New London Public Schools, whether it's a city as a whole, but thinking of a system that runs more smoothly, effectively and minus some, I mean, because once you have a nice system in place, you get to remove part of the political piece of it, you know. And so thinking about, about having that in place so that we're serving our students, we're taking care of our residents that are not students by managing our funds correctly, efficiently.
And interestingly, when, the last time the non-lapsing fund came up at City Council, it was one of the more conservative councillors, John Sadai, who I believe was the only one to vote in favor of it, which was startling in a way, but in a way, if someone is really fiscally careful, it makes a lot more sense to have this kind of fund than to almost be encouraging the school districts to find ways to spend the money at the end of the year that might have value but are not as critical as what it would be spent for, if it could be planned for as a big capital improvement.
Yeah, no, it is interesting because to me, it's one of those issues that really does cross the party, multiple-party lines because it is conservative in the way, in the sense that it does account for our smart spending, but at the same time, it is an education issue and it takes care of the school system, which tends to be a bit more of a, maybe, is it more of a lefty thing to want to have those certain services funded appropriately?
It might be age-related too, you know, people whose kids have long been out of the schools might feel a little more remote from it. To be really concrete about it, if you look at the last, you know, five or six years, what kind of big capital projects have been forced on the schools that were really challenging to deal with under our current system?
Well, we have an issue right now with a boiler at the high school, which is a bit of a challenge.
That's why I take a deep breath because I think there are plenty.
We had three boilers at the high school because in any commercial building, you have backup boilers because boilers go down. And several years ago, we were down to one. I believe the term was, there isn't anything to weld on to, to fix these old ones. So we did manage to secure a state grant to be able to replace the boiler and that was very fortunate, but we were very concerned that we weren't going to be, there's also quite a lead time, by the way, to getting a boiler in. You order it and it comes in two months later and then it takes a while to be able to install it. We were really quite worried that we were going to have to close school for a number of days because down to one boiler, if that boiler went down, you can't have students in a building that's only 30 degrees. So, you know, that's one that was a problem then and it's a problem now again as we're entering the construction phase of the high school. The harbor roof we replaced last summer and should have replaced it before that because the leaks certainly caused damage to other aspects of the building and even some other aspects of the building that had been renovated. Let's see, what else?
Were there window leaking situations?
Windows that are actually still a bit of an issue with the leaking, but the roof was leaking and causing the water to come in and damaged walls that had been painted and, you know, and so forth. I'm trying to think. We replaced a chiller at the middle school this year. That was a little over $100,000. If that went down again, that's a whole large area of the school that, it's not like the olden days, you know, where you just open the windows. You can't open the windows. And that's not, that's not that we say, hey, let's build a bunch of schools that we can have nice and cool and cushy. That's what the architects and the state requires. So, you know, that's probably where our biggest expenditure and unanticipated expenditure goes into is in the heating and cooling systems in the buildings. You know, that's easily a half a million dollars a year.
Wow.
You know, I have to say that there's also things that we probably don't even get to, like one of the things that I think about is at the high school, the bleachers. One of the bleachers has this single like rod rail and when you're, I don't know what the height is, but they get pretty high. And, okay, so not only is it a single rod where people, young people, old people can fall down many feet, but it wiggles, I would say significantly. So it would aid to someone falling because if you go lean on it and it goes that way, it's easier for you to fall. And it's one of those things that hasn't even risen to the top of urgency because, and I've brought it up to council members, I've, you know, brought it up to multiple people, but has it...
You should get the risk manager on your side.
I think I, I might have. I don't want to misspeak, so I don't, but it's one of those issues that hasn't even risen to that level because it doesn't mean that our schools won't open or something like that, you know?
Yeah, everybody's favorite meeting, the school building maintenance meeting. There's a long list of work orders that have been submitted. This was mostly from when the city used to take care of the maintenance of the buildings before the $515,000 was removed from their public works budget. The list goes on and on and you see the dates of when things were put on the list. And I mean, it's just like in your home, if you have a stain on your carpet, that doesn't mean you replaced your carpet. I mean, not everything on that list is absolutely critical, but everything on that list should be done at some point. And there are things that have been on the list for years that haven't been done. Another point I want to make about sort of the conservative or not conservative aspect of a non-lapsing fund is the only way that any money gets put into that fund is if the Board of Education spends less than what their appropriated budget is. So it's not a money grab. The Board's not trying to take money from anywhere that it doesn't belong. But if there are additional funds that are available, funds that have not been expended that had otherwise been budgeted to be expended, then to put that into a non-lapsing fund and then through that fund, be able to manage the flex from year to year of unforeseen repairs. If you put a half a million dollars in the fund, you know, in one year, you may never really need to put anything more in it. I mean, other than to just replenish it back to, it's not like it's going to be a fund that's going to have, you know, $20 million in it someday or something like that. I don't think anybody's non-lapsing fund just keeps building because if it starts to get up to a certain size, you know, I would think that we would want to spend it on some of the, very many projects that really need to be done, that we don't want to risk overspending our budget by doing one of those projects earlier in the year.
Now, in your role as finance director, having this non-lapsing fund in contrast to having to return what you don't spend or figure out something, you know, fairly useful to spend the balance on, how, does that impact how you feel like about your job?
Yeah, it's a lot more tedious. It's a whole lot more tedious. You know, I mentioned earlier, there's 150 to 200 people in the district that are making purchases and we have to spend everything pretty much to the dollar. And we pretty much do that every year, but that is very, very stressful. You know, you might order, an order of computers in the beginning of July and the rep says, yep, absolutely, I'll have them to you by June 30th, I'm sorry, in the beginning of June, and says, well, we'll have them to you by June 30th. But if they don't actually get delivered by June 30th, then those are funds that are going to have to come out of next year's budget because it's now next year when you receive them. So it means we underspent this year's money, we give that money back to the city, next year, we've already spent some of that budget, we're not going to get that money back from the city.
Yeah, it isn't as though you're going to get a raise in your school budget.
Yeah, so we're not trying to take anything, you know, from, you know, anything that isn't already the school district's appropriation to spend. You know, we're just trying to be able to manage it more effectively.
I want to go back to what you were saying about the conundrum that the school district is in, that if you do not save and have for the projects, then it's a certain fiscal irresponsibility. But if you do, in some people's eyes, but if you do save, or if you do have any money left over, or, I mean, create a situation where you have, you know, you're able to put something aside, then it also is seen as in, well, look, you didn't need that amount, that budget amount. So you end up in this difficult situation that I think we need to look at what the, it's a, it's a, I don't know, is this, are you supposed to say this or not? Can you say damned if you do, damned if you don't, online, on the air?
Actually, yes, you're allowed to say those words on public access.
Okay, okay, now I'll say it out loud.
You can't ask for political money, but you can say four little words.
So I was just going to say, it's one of those like damned if you do, damned if you don't situations where you do need to take care of these larger expenditures and yet if you don't, I mean, if you do set the money aside, then it's, well, you have money left over. And so how, I mean, what are the suggestions are out there on how, on how we do this? I really don't see any other way. And we've seen plenty of districts around in Connecticut that it's been working for. Just to emphasize again, that's why the legislation went from being able to send, save a maximum or deposit a maximum of 1% of the general fund budget into a non-lapsing versus now the new legislation that says up to 2% because it's been working, it's successful, it's necessary, it's prudent.
And those percentages are...
And we should consider it in New London.
Yes, and those percentages are small enough that they're not indicative that you underspent because, you know, you really didn't need the money. It's just the natural give and take that what you predict is not always exactly what happens. I wanted to spend a couple minutes talking about just the concept of maintenance in the city in general, not just related to the schools. But, you know, we've been hearing quite a lot about the potential move of offices, city offices to different places and selling city-owned properties partly because they're in such terrible condition that, you know, they can't be salvaged. And I just wonder, is there any hope that moving forward will decide we can't just trash what we have and move somewhere else? And how would we go about changing that mindset?
I think this is a part of changing that mindset, right? It is a part of...
In terms of the schools, it is.
Yes, yes, it's saying, it's, I mean, whether you want to sell it or you want to save it, it makes sense to take care of it so that you can sell, so that it's not, a building gets to a point where you can no longer do anything for it, right? I'm thinking of on Hempstead, the house that many years ago was, was, we couldn't knock it down because we wanted to preserve it, right? Because it was possible, I don't know if it was the historic, you know, that said, therefore, we need to preserve it. But now we got to a certain point where it got knocked down, right? So same with our school buildings.
And I see it in the city buildings too, you know. It's not that I am so attached to the Martin Center, but, you know, years ago, I remember being, having a meeting in the senior center during a rainstorm and like there was a trash can under a hole in the roof. And I texted Public Works and the answer was, well, where did you see the leak? And I said where it was. And the response was, oh, we already knew about that one, we were afraid it was a new leak. And at a certain point, the city, I don't know, we just have to stop doing that. I find it really frustrating because neglecting those admittedly large expenses almost, you know, expands what you have to pay in the future exponentially.
Yeah.
It seems like it just kind of goes by design with the concept of politics, you know, pass a tax cut, but make sure that it doesn't actually go into effect until you're out of office.
Yeah.
And it's, I mean, it's like having a car and saying, well, I'm not going to spend, you know, $20 every 10,000 miles to change the oil, so I won't change the oil, I'll save that little bit of money because I got to keep the money now when it matters to me, but it means my car's only going to last half as long.
Right.
I mean, problems with the Martin Center, the Martin Center is in shape where it's crazy to try and fix that building now, but how did it get there?
Right.
The same way that Jennings School is getting into the shape that it's getting into, or Winthrop is getting into the shape that it's into, or whatever other city building was built recently, you know. I'm not necessarily saying that we don't take care of our school buildings, but we don't because we don't do the preventative maintenance that we really need to. It's not considered an essential expense.
Yeah, I do wonder if it's kind of a poverty mentality. And we're not, I mean, we're poor, but we're not that poor, I don't think, that we can't commit to some kind of maintenance. Okay, I guess the last thing, we have about five more minutes, is what should people who are listening to this do about it? What can, you know, the New London public do to support this idea, to draw attention to it?
To me, talk to, talk to people who are elected in office and people who are running and let them know that you do consider, if you do consider maintaining our buildings an essential expense, as you said, in order not to pay greater down the road and so that we do have these resources, these properties to either be able to enjoy for our use or be able to move along as an asset when, if that's the need that we've determined.
Do you think there's a way to get, New London's population is, well, it's got young people, but it's got a fairly large population of older folks too. And I wonder, I don't know if there's a way to get some of the older New Londoners to feel more connected with the schools?
I think that's a totally different conversation, but I do think that there are plenty of older and younger New Londoners that understand the concept of conservation and think that it's, it's something that we should be doing is taking care of our buildings, taking care of our assets. And in many, in many ways, an asset because of the physical, you know, the property value and also an asset because the schools does end up reflecting our property taxes, whether people want to come into the city or not. Yeah, I think older New Londoners, there are plenty that do.
And before we finish, I wanted to bring up or clarify something that Rob and I were talking about before the show started, when we were talking about why we're doing this show now and not just waiting till October. And it sounded as if council could be convinced to pass this kind of ordinance soon, that it could actually be retroactive to the last fiscal year for the, for the school board. How would that work?
So I'm not sure what exactly the parameters or the stipulations are, but when, when this was brought to the council last year, it was in July that it was brought to the council. We acknowledged that the books for that year had not been closed, just as the fiscal year 19 books have not been closed yet. Actually, the audit, you know, we'll close our books by September 30th, September 1st. Actually, the audit, you know, we'll close our books by September 30th, September 1st, I'm sorry. But the audit actually won't be completed until December. So if the council was to pass a resolution to allow for a non-lapsing fund, it would be pending the results of an audit. So I believe that if the council so chose now, they could pass a resolution to allow up to a certain amount to go into a non-lapsing fund. Or they could allow exactly a certain amount, but all of it would be depending on an audit, because we can't put the money in the fund balance if it turns out that we closed the books wrong, or something got disallowed in the audit or something, so that there wasn't any money to put into it.
So it's not really too late for New Londoners to call all their councilors and try to find a friendly counselor to bring up this resolution to make it so, based on the audit of the fiscal year that just closed?
Yeah, it's not too late.
It's never too late.
But, but I also, I just, you know, want to remind you that we have to actually have a surplus in order for any money to go in.
Sure.
So if the council was to pass a resolution this year and there wasn't a surplus, no harm done. Maybe it lays the groundwork to be able to pass resolutions like that in future years. You know, it's, it's not going to work backwards on them, so.
Well, thank you, Rob, and thank you, Myrna. I think...
Thank you for giving a voice to this issue.
Yeah, I think we covered everything. And if people want to know more, I'm sure they can figure out how to get in touch with either of you.
Yes.
And I, I think it's, it's food for thought in, in terms of how we manage city finances and school finances. So thank you so much. Thanks to everyone for watching. We will put the show up on YouTube, since we didn't really advertise that it was happening very well. And we will be back again in October.
Thanks for coming out of summer.
Oh, yeah. Every so often, I can, I'll be...